Good evening and welcome to the October 3rd Board of Trustees Meeting. Would we please all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, will you please call the roll?
Present. Present.
Present.
Present.
Present, and we have no appointments today, but we have a couple of presentations. So I will turn it over to Deputy Mayor Howell to do the first one.
So this year, sorry, so this year, I don't know that I need a microphone, Gary, but so this year, there's a special new award for the Takahoe Road Race, and it's the Community Spirit Award. And I was actually inspired by Koala Park Daycare last year because they had like 30 people sign up. They had people who worked at the business, they had people whose kids were at the daycare. They came in shirts with their logo and their names on them. And this year, they did the same. And also Karina had a table for everybody who was on her team where she supplied them with breakfast. And so Koala Park Daycare is this year's recipient of the first Takahoe Challenge Community Spirit Award. And our businesses are wonderful, but I really wanted to thank you guys for the effort.
It was our pleasure, and I had no idea that this was the first ever.
Can you give her the mic?
Yes.
Sorry, I had no idea it was the first award, so it's, I'm honored, truly. So thank you very much. It's great to, and this is my mom Lily, who's been in business with me for 10 years now. She deserves this just as much as I do and everybody else that's on the team and all our customers too. We love Takahoe and we love our community, and giving back to our community is always very important to us. So, thank you.
So the next presentation is Dear to My Heart. I, for those of you who know, I've talked about it a little bit. I started to learn how to play the piano, and I'm very proud that I learned to play two Christmas songs. That's all I want to learn. And I had a nice conversation with the Executive Director Kathleen Suss, who's phenomenal from the Concordia Conservatory, and Marion Anderson, the phenomenal Executive Director also of our Cornerstone Children's Center that's right here in the Village building. And we talked about providing tuition-free music lessons for our kids in the UPK program. And all I had to do was plant that seed, and they ran with it. So I want to let them come forward to talk about this new initiative and partnership.
We are so excited to let you know that it is our pleasure that the Takahoe UPK Music Outreach Program will be offered by Concordia Conservatory. They will be tuition-free weekly music classes for the entire UPK every week. They will be taught by Concordia Conservatory faculty John Chang, as well as an after-school music program and Suzuki violin and cello classes with private lessons with our faculty members Monica Bautwich and cellist Julie Deeslin. And this program will be available to all students enrolled in Takahoe's Universal Pre-K at Cornerstone Children's Center.
UPK is also a totally free program for the 32 children who are currently enrolled. This is just a great partnership between the school district, Concordia, the Village, you know, for a great little group of four-year-olds that have been pandemic babies. So we're going to get them all caught up and get them ready for kindergarten.
So Concordia Conservatory and the Takahoe Public School District, we are totally and thoroughly thrilled to partner with you all. Innovative programming, and we look forward to our preschoolers to finding joy and love in music that will hopefully take them a lifetime long. For 25 years, I have been the Executive Director of Concordia Conservatory, and I've seen firsthand the power of music and music education in one's life. And learning and making music, whether it's instrumental, vocal, or therapeutic, becomes greatly enhanced when it becomes the context of a community. So thank you for taking this initiative and going with it and for planting this, this seed, Mayor Andino, last February at a luncheon. My daughter Katie is a graduate of the William E. Cottle School. So Takahoe, this school district, and this community hold a very special place in our heart and in our family, and we look forward to continuing this program for years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
Just another thank you to the Village because this program would not have gotten off the ground without the mayor and her support, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you guys. All I did was say, can you guys do it? And you did, so the credit goes to you. And I'm really excited because, as Kathleen knows and many have heard me say, there are so many children who can't afford to have music lessons, and music and the arts is so important in the development of a child. And so this is why it's really dear to my heart because kids who otherwise would not have an opportunity to learn an instrument get these world-renowned instructors to, to give them that, that gift. So thank you so much. And I look forward to the recital with the kids. So thank you very much. And so on that note, some more good news. I'm going to ask the Chief to come forward because we had a, a nice event happen in the Village, and it really spoke to the collaboration, speaking of collaborations, of different departments coming together to make a miracle happen. And so Chief, could you come forward and give a summary? And we want to honor those people who, who helped with this.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 2nd, at about 3:50 PM, Sergeant Vincent Pinto of Tocco Police Department received a 911 call from a male requesting an ambulance for his wife, who was in active labor. Sergeant Pinto dispatched Detective Stephen Leoni and Police Officer Brian Madden to assist and transferred the call to the Westchester County Emergency Services Communication Center. Eastchester Volunteer Ambulance Corps and Eastchester Fire Department were dispatched by the center. Upon the officer's arrival, they found the soon-to-be mom about to give birth. With the support of emergency dispatcher Matt Hollis on the phone giving instructions, the officers aided mom in the delivery of a healthy baby girl. Evac paramedic Abel Calado arrived on scene and provided medical care to the newborn and mom with the assistance of emergency medical technicians Allison, Lisella, Michael Kirkpatrick, and Emily Carr, as well as Eastchester firefighter Anthony Palero. Mom and baby girl were transported to White Plains Hospital by evac for evaluation, and both were in excellent condition, as well as dad.
He didn't have to do any work.
So I know that, as the mayor said, this was a perfect example of cooperation, partnership, a scenario where the level of service is top-notch and seamless, handing over from police to EMS and fire and assistance. So a great example of that partnership and that collaboration. And congratulations to all involved, especially mom and our new baby girl.
Thank you, Chief. And so what we'd like to do, the Village would like to present everyone that's been named with an award. So if I could ask our trustee Nicole Engelbert and Kara Conan to present the awards to our EMTs and paramedics, if you would come forward first? And we just want to say thank you very much for the work that you do every day. This is a special day, but you're doing this work every day, so thank you.
Thank you for the amazing job.
So Nicole.
Chief, wait.
Yes. I'm, well firefighter Palero has a family commitment to that.
So we're going to do that, okay? Takahoe's a hugging village. Okay, so if you could present it for them. Yes, that's great. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming tonight. And I know Officer Madden couldn't make it here, but if I could ask Officer Leoni to come forward?
And the Chief? Can I ask you to accept Madden?
Testing, yep. For those of you who may not know, I have a pretty special relationship with Officer Leoni. We text each other during meetings. I shouldn't be telling everybody this, right? We make, we make jokes. So Steve, I was very proud to hear that you took part in this delivery of a baby, so I want to present you also with recognition for this. And I also have something for Bella, so Steve Leoni's daughter is awesome. And she just won an election at school, I understand, Student Council. So let's give her a hand of applause. I'd like Bella to know this. So I got her a little gift. She's got a little gift here. And I bought, I got her a necklace that says, I'll let you read it, because I'm all about girl power.
She believed she could, so she did.
So I want her to wear this on her neck. So congratulations to dad and congratulations to Bella. Thanks, Steve. And thanks, Chief.
No hugs for the cops. Just, I just do want to acknowledge, I do want to acknowledge Fire Commissioners Carlo and Fire Commissioner Randalone, who are also present in the room tonight.
So yes, I was going to thank you guys for being here to represent the fire department. I think there, if, Wade, if we could put the cameras on the... Can I ask you guys to come forward? And just say hello to Takahoe. And please send our congratulations and thank you to the firefighter for the work that he also did.
We will. Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm Paul Randalone, and this is Paul Carlo. As you know, I'm never surprised when I hear something with these guys' voices.
Oh, the microphone, he said.
I'm very proud of our firefighters and what they do, and I'm never surprised at these types of things that happen. Not every day, but what can I say? I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Okay. So, back to reality. So we have a presentation from Sustainable Westchester regarding the Westchester Power and Westchester Power Solar Credit, right? Oh, they're on Zoom, okay.
Thanks Administrator Burke, Mayor, and Trustees for having us here today. Getting on schedule to give you a little update on what's happening with the Westchester Power program, with the electricity supply offering that you're well familiar with and the new contract coming up, as well as previewing some exciting new stuff we have coming offered through Westchester Power with this solar credit offering. So I don't think I've been in front of you all before. My name is Nick Tedrow. I am the Operations Manager for Westchester Power, and I'm joined by a couple of my colleagues here who will introduce themselves.
Thank you, Nick. Hi, everyone. I'm Yasmin Najjar, the Environmental and Climate Justice Associate for Sustainable Westchester. Megan?
Hi, y'all. I'm Megan Orde. I'm a Clean Energy Associate working in the solar department.
All right, so we'll be respectful of your time here and try and jam through stuff and make sure you get all the information. So Megan?
I'm just realizing I don't have access to screen sharing.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
Yeah, you will shortly. You see where it says the green screen, share screen? There you go.
That's my screen.
Or allow her.
Sorry, David, I should have said that one of my colleagues would be sharing because he probably made me the co-host when I joined.
Well, Megan's going to be the actual host, I think, so.
I'm out of who's.
Her power's back after. All right.
Yep, we're good.
Awesome, thanks. So we'll get going here to the next slide. So Sustainable Westchester, for anybody out there who may not know or refresher here, we're a nonprofit here in the county, and our members are actually the municipalities. So 44 of the 45 cities, towns, and villages in Westchester County, plus the county itself, are our members. And we run different shared service, public benefit programming centered around sustainability and, you know, improving the environment and building fiscally sound solutions and sustainable solutions for the future resilient communities. So we obviously have a clean energy focus on the environment. Excellent. So just a quick overview here. We're going to go through this faster than it looks, I promise. We'll just cover what Westchester Power is again, just for background. Talk about the electricity supply and the new contract for the resumption of the program in Takahoe and the other 23 aggregate municipalities in the ConEdison Territory and what, you know, what that's all about. And then again, like I said, preview the solar credit offering. So Westchester Power is a program of Sustainable Westchester, and 29 of the municipalities that are in Sustainable Westchester are part of the Westchester Power program, and that's broken across three different groupings. We have a group in NiSEG that contracts together for electricity supply, as well as this larger aggregation that we're part of with 23 other municipalities, as I mentioned. And then the City of Yonkers, who just joined the program this year, contracts alone. So you can see our rough to my cat load there. And then just a basic overview, we're, you know, regulated by the New York State Public Service Commission, who enable our program structure to exist. And there's many other CCAs out there in the state now as well, but we are the one that serves the county. And it's a program that Takahoe has reviewed, and there was a long compliance process that we went through and a lot of different sort of measures we took before the Village decided to join the program, not too long ago, actually. And through the electricity supply program, we offer two different supply sources, the 100% renewable, which is, you know, the standard default for most people here in the county, as well as the standard sort of market basic supply mix, which is a mix of fossil fuels. And then we have the solar credit launching in Q4, hopefully. And we'll talk about that, all that here now. So just some key features of the Westchester Power program to keep in mind as a refresher for people. It is an opt-out format, and this format means that anyone who's an eligible participant in any municipalities, they have Westchester Power as their default electricity supplier rather than ConEdison. And this enables us to maximize the buying power of our community. So when we go out and do contract solicitation, we get really competitive offers from suppliers who want to be the supplier of our program based on our customer size. So it functions the same way as your electric supply always has, whereas before ConEdison was your default supplier. But now you actually have a choice and an option for the first time with Westchester Power as a community selected by your representative supply option, and then always have the option to go back to ConEdison if you want. It's a consumer-friendly program. The contracts are between the municipalities, us, and the supplier. So at the individual level, there's nothing you have to sign. It's free for you to come or go with no fees or penalties, as much as you want over the course of the contract period. And again, I mentioned two supply options, as well, making 100% renewable energy really accessible for folks, because it can be prohibitive. And then importantly, we emphasize that savings aren't guaranteed through the program since we can't predict what the utility will charge, but we have been historically competitive over our lifespan since 2016. So a lot of you might be aware that we actually had to go on a pause briefly between the last contract and this one we have upcoming. That was because of some extreme market conditions really hampering our efforts to solicit for a new contract and lock one in. So people were transferred to the ConEdison basic supply after the last contract expired, June 30th. So now we've got to the point where we're able to actually hold that solicitation and award a contract. So folks are now getting letters about their pending enrollments back into the program, which is set to resume November 1st. For the new contract details, Constellation New Energy, they were the supplier on the last contract, and they're going to continue as the solicitation winner for the new contract. And the rates for both residential and small commercial accounts are 15.128 cents per kilowatt hour for the 100% renewable and 13.364 for the standard supply. And this is a two-year contract, so starts November 1st and runs through October 31st, 2020. So just to touch a little bit about why we have the pause and why the rates, anyone familiar with the program will notice those rates are higher than our last contract. There's been a lot of volatility in the energy market, and with a lot of things in the world these days, you know, with inflation, there's a lot of factors playing into this just really steep rise in prices we've had over the last year and a half. So you can see, when we look at natural gas, which is the predominant fuel for electricity production, you know, a year and a half times ago, I mean, a year and a half time ago, it was roughly around, you know, $3 per unit, whereas just last month, it was up over $9. So just an incredibly, you know, huge spike in prices that we haven't seen in decades, anything like it. So that's a reflection, our REITs are a reflection of where the market's at today and where it's looking to be, you know, set at for the foreseeable future. And you could do a pretty easy Google, being searched, whatever, and, you know, read a lot about what people are saying about natural gas prices and electricity prices in the future. And then as well, it's important to note that ConEd has been pretty transparent as of last month to customers, letting them know to expect much higher bills this winter over last year for Westchester County residents on electricity. For anyone who was with ConEdison last winter, they would, they say roughly 27% higher over winter this winter. So yeah, this is something that's just a function of where the electricity market is right now and something we're all in for, for the time being, it seems like. So rough milestones here, September, I mentioned, people are getting their notification letters, and there's a 30-day opt-out window just for initial enrollment. So if you don't want to be a part of the new contract terms right when it starts in November, that deadline is October 17th, but you can opt out anytime without fees or penalties. If you come to us after the 17th, the only risk factor is you might be included for one month when you didn't want to be. But again, come back whenever you want, leave whenever you want. It's totally here as a benefit for residents and small businesses. And yeah, November, on your first meet or read date, you'll be enrolled in the program, and then December, you would see that reflected on your bill, Westchester Power. So keep an eye for the letter. It's going to look like this. It's co-written with Takahoe's seal and Howers. Next slide. And the letter looks like this. It'll give a bunch of background that I just gave, point you to where different resources are, contact information, getting in touch with us, learning more. We're having information sessions this week and next, you know, on Zoom, so you can check out our website for details on those. And, yeah, next slide. Okay, so yeah, there's the questions. If you have questions about the program specifically, Westchester Power at sustainablewestchester.org or info@... And then the URL that I mentioned about where to find a lot of details specific to your situation or at the URL here for the ConEd territory. And then we're breaking this into two parts, so I'll take any questions that anyone might have here about the electricity supply before passing it off to Yasmin and Megan for the solar credit.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the board who has any questions? Well, thank you very much for coming via Zoom to... Right, but for that one.
My colleagues here, sorry.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Governor?
Yeah, got it. Megan, could you please go to the next slide, please? Yeah, so I'd like to say thank you to Nick and everyone for allowing Megan and I to speak about the Westchester Power's new solar credit offering. Sustainable Westchester is introducing a new opt-out community solar offering. This offering allows eligible participants to earn solar credits in the form of guaranteed monetary savings on electricity bills without the installation of solar panels on their own property. With climate justice in mind, prioritization to receive these guaranteed savings will go to low-to-moderate-income households, starting with households enrolled in the Utilities Assistance Program. Next slide, please. So households enrolled in the Utilities Assistance Programs are prioritized for this offering since they face the highest burden of energy costs and can benefit the most from solar credit savings. Utility Assistance Program participants may be recipients of HEEP, SNAP, SSI, and other similar programs. Those enrolled in the Utilities Assistance Programs are also referred to as Assistant Program Participants by the Public Service Commission. Next slide, please. So there are over 30,000 households in the Utilities Assistance Programs in Westchester County and approximately 227 in Takahoe, according to American Community Survey data. Prioritization will go as follows. Households in the Utilities Assistance Programs and municipalities that adopt the Enabling Law sooner will be prioritized over those municipalities that adopted at a later point. Next, this offering prioritizes households located in census tracts designated as disadvantaged communities. The DAC criteria was developed by the Climate Justice Working Group. And after that, we'll prioritize households in nonDAC-designated census tracts with the lowest area median household income. As a mini-update, 10 municipalities have already adopted the Enabling Law, including New Rochelle, Bedford, White Plains, and many more. So with that, I'll pass it on to Megan to explain how the solar credit offering works.
Thank you, Yasmin. So again, the solar credit offering uses the New York State Community Solar Model, which is made possible because all us ConEd and NiSEG electricity users contribute to a New York State fund that helps to enable new solar projects. And these solar projects that receive community solar incentives are mandated to provide solar credits to community members. So step one, without any installation needed, eligible participants are allocated a portion or a little share of a local solar project based on their historic annual electricity usage. Step two, solar energy generated from the project is delivered to the local power grid. Step three, the energy generated by that project earns participants solar credits or monetary savings, reducing their monthly electricity bill. This slide details how eligible participants will be enrolled. So first, targeted outreach, Sustainable Westchester will conduct meetings and webinars, much like this one. After that, notification letters will be sent to each eligible household as local solar project capacity becomes available. Once a household receives that letter, that means that they're in the 30-day opt-out period and have 30 days to notify us and opt out before being automatically enrolled. So those notified households that choose to do nothing will be automatically subscribed to a local solar project. Naturally, questions might arise such as, why is this using an opt-out basis? Why can't people just sign up if they want to? Well, shared community solar has been around for over five years on a sign-up basis, but participation of low-to-moderate-income households has been very low to date. So to ensure and direct benefits on a large scale to those who could benefit most, Sustainable Westchester is using this opt-out basis. So eligible participants will be automatically enrolled, making it easier for them to receive these guaranteed savings unless, of course, they choose to opt out. So saying you are a participant enrolled in the program, how exactly is savings applied to your bill? So once your assigned project starts to generate electricity, you will earn a solar credit each month, which is applied to your bill. And this is where the math comes in. 90% of the solar credit will be deducted from the bill as a subscription fee, and 10% of the total solar credit... of the total solar credit remains on your bill as monetary savings. So here's a Con Edison example of what that might look like. Say that your total electricity charge for this month is $150, and you also earn $100 in a solar credit. A $90 subscription fee is deducted from the bill, which is 90% of the solar credit, and that means that $10 is retained on your bill, and you'd see that $10 as a line item called adjustments on the bill. So in total, you only pay $140 of what would have been a $150 bill. And I will hand it back to Yasmin.
Thank you. So as Megan just discussed, by participating, eligible participants can save up to 10% on their monthly electricity bill without any installation on their property. They don't have to worry about any impacts to their enrollment in the utility assistance programs or other similar assistance program benefits. They will pay their bill as they usually do. They'll be able to keep their electricity supplier and deliver. They can cancel anytime without penalty, and they also support the growth of local solar projects that ultimately help decrease fossil fuel usage, improve air quality, and provide local installation and operation jobs. Next slide, please. Okay, so this offering promotes climate justice by prioritizing lower-income households. It threatens local economies. It stimulates and accelerates local renewable energy development at scale. And last but not least, it advances the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act goals of delivering 35% of benefits to disadvantaged communities. Next slide, please. So Sustainable Westchester will be providing support to ensure a successful deliverance of this offering. We'll be performing outreach. We'll be providing collateral material. We'll be sending notification letters to eligible residents and small businesses. We'll provide customer service, and we'll have support for Spanish-speaking residents. Next slide, please. So as, so for municipalities that wish to make the solar credit offering available to the eligible residents, they must take the following steps. First, you must update the updated, adopt the updated enabling law that Public Service Commission requires that participating municipalities adopt specific language adopting the solar credit offering to their existing Westchester Power Community Choice Aggregation Law. We have sent a template for amending your enabling law together with a draft resolution for public hearing. Second is to sign the administration agreement to enable the solar credit offering to your constituents. We will circulate the administration agreement for your review upon final approval of the implementation plan by the PSD. And one thing to note is that after the enabling law is adopted, Sustainable Westchester will then start the two-month mandatory community outreach. In order for municipalities to attain New York State approval, we must submit a copy of the municipality's up-to-date local enabling law, evidence of two months of outreach, and a sample notification letter. Next slide, please. So for municipalities such as Toccoho that have already adopted the CCA enabling law and participate in Westchester Power, we have prepared and sent over a redline copy of the updated law. The Public Service Commission has made a recent decision that the CCA law must include procedures and new product offerings such as opt-out CDD in order to participate in the solar credit offering. Sustainable Westchester has made changes to the definitions of both existing and old concepts, and municipalities that, and this work has been also reviewed by the Department of Public Services and Pace Energy and Climate Center. So last but not least, another action that you can take to support this initiative is to involve Sustainable Westchester in all solar and energy storage projects for your municipal, for which your municipality is a stakeholder. Some of these projects may be, be able to be brought into the solar credit offering and support us to enroll more eligible participants. Next slide, please. So thank you so much. That ends our presentation, so I would like to open up the floor to any questions you may have for Megan and I.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
I was just wondering if you'll be able to tell us afterwards what percentage of people that were offered the program participated?
Wait, wait, I'm so sorry.
I was wondering if you'll be able to tell us the number of people participating in the program compared to who was eligible?
So right now, where the solar credit, where we're at right now is we're still waiting on approval from the Public Service Commission. There's currently nobody enrolled at the moment.
Right.
But our prioritization is to those who are part of the utilities assistance program. So we're estimating that as soon as Toccoho adopts the enabling law and we get approval by the PSD, we would be able to enroll 227 of residents in Toccoho. And then we'll move on slowly to the next category of those who are located within disadvantaged communities and those that are within a low to moderate income, area median income level. So as of now, we estimate that 227 will benefit in Toccoho if the enabling law is to be adopted.
Right, I got that. I think what I was asking is after everything is done and the enrollment period has gone by, could you tell us, I guess, how many people opt out?
So because we keep track of those who opt out of other programs, but I can't know for sure, and I could make a note of that.
Yeah, I think we'd like to know...
We'll be able to track that for sure out of the eligible pool that was, you know, set through automatic enrollment. There'll be certainly an easy enough mechanism to know how many opted out and ensure that...
Yeah, we can send a list over to you.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful for us, you know, as we can help engage and explain, you know, to the community to get a higher participation. That'd be helpful.
Anyone in the community that's here with us have any questions? Or on Zoom? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming and presenting to the community, and, you know, we'll await more information to determine what the next steps are.
I had a question.
Oh, Suzanne?
Yeah. I'm not sure, does this presentation from Electric Westchester Power, is that electricity and gas?
Just electricity. We don't offer a gas supply service.
So then that doesn't really make sense for somebody who's with Con Ed, get electricity and gas and just do electricity with somebody else?
It's still, you know, pretty seamless because it's all consolidated billing. So even if you get electricity, or you can get gas separately too from another company who does offer it, it'll all still be billed through your one Con Edison bill. So you're not tracking different, you know, service providers in that sense. You're just making decisions about where you want your energy to come from and maybe what you paid for it.
So Con Edison is still the one who supplies it, or...
Yeah, they deliver it. So they don't go from supply and delivery. Yeah, that's right. So they, they take delivery charges, and that's used to, you know, support their maintenance of the transmission lines and all of the cost and infrastructure that go into actually ensuring you're getting electricity. The supply cost for them is just a pass-through. They don't make money on that. They just, that's a service they provide, but they're just buying it off the market and asking at you at cost as a consumer.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have no public hearings. May I have a motion to adopt the minutes of September 12th, 2022 meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we have the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. And I just, before anyone comes forward, I just do want to thank the commissioners and Chief Tween for staying. I just want you not to feel obligated to stay. We will totally not be offended. We sort of walked out of your meeting the other day, sorry. But just so you know, I just don't want you to feel like you have to. You're welcome. Thank you very much, Chief. But you're welcome to stay. I just didn't want you to feel obligated. So if anyone has anything that they'd like to address with the board, anything on the agenda only, there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting for any other non-agenda items. You're welcome to come forward now. Is there anyone in the room? Or anyone on Zoom that has, wants to address the board on any agenda items? Nobody, David? Okay. All right, great. So we will move forward with our resolutions for the night. We have six of them. One came in additional last minute. May I have a motion authorizing the setting of a public hearing to consider a proposed local law modifying Chapter 6, Article 10 of the Toccoho Village Code titled Administration and Enforcement of Uniform Code as Per Requirement from New York State? David, could you talk a little bit about that? As you type to the multitasking?
So as many people know, we actually adopted the New York State Code. So when it comes to any kind of building construction, any of the rules and regulations in regards to that, it's actually dictated by New York State because we adopted their uniform code. They've actually come out this year and want us to re-adopt one portion of this code, relook at it, what it means for the village, and just kind of update it. And so there's actually not that many changes specific for the village that we are actually allowed to change. A couple of them are the length of building permits and how long we can actually have those out there and extend those. So that's something that we need to look at. Things that can be excluded from building permits, like siding or in-kind windows and those types of things. So that's giving us leverage on, you know, some leeway on that kind of stuff. So we'll have more conversations with the board if we want to. We already exclude certain things. It's if we want to exclude more and what kind of New York State will allow us to do. So this is just an update of one section of that code.
Okay, may I have a motion to authorize the setting of that public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution number two, also authorizing the setting of a public hearing to consider a proposed local law amending Chapter 11A of the Village Code to amend the members of the Historic Preservation Commission from three to five members.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And just so that the public understands what's happening there, so currently we do have a Historic Preservation Commission that consists of three members. It, it's somewhat presents some constraints if someone needs to recuse themselves or if we have somebody who's out to, to vote. So the, the commission has requested that we increase the number of members to five members, and so that is what this public hearing will be about. Right. Good, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And if we have five commissioners, then state grants and state aid are more accessible to the, to the village and to the commission. Anything else that I should? Okay, thanks. So resolution number three, may I have a motion authorizing the sale of a surplus for a Dodge Charger in the amount of $13,600 to the highest bidder, S. Ali of Reynolds, Indiana?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And authorizing the Village Court to apply for a Justice Court Assistance Program grant for a grant cycle of 2022 to 2023, up to $30,000. And we always like money.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we do have an additional, the board is not aware of this resolution, but I will ask for a motion to approve the authorization of closure of Warren Avenue for the annual Halloween, Halloween parade and party to take place on Monday, October 31st at 5:00 PM from Marveldale Road, starting at Marveldale Road and Lincoln Avenue, continuing north to Stewart Avenue, then on to Warren Avenue. And I know Deputy Mayor will love to, to move that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Board. And also, we want to pay the bills, so may I have a motion authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $427,350.89.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, thanks. So let's move on to departmental reports. Can we start with you, Chief?
Good evening again. Just a couple of quick announcements, so some good news and unfortunately some bad news. I just want to start with the good news. Congratulations to Police Officer Peter Costa. This week, he completed a two-week motorcycle school at Yonkers Police Department. It is a pretty rigorous class, and Pete finished towards the top of his class. So congratulations to Peter, and of course, thank you to Yonkers Police Department and all the instructors throughout Westchester County that make this happen at no cost to our village. So thank you to all involved. And unfortunately, we lost a retired member of the service, Retired Sergeant Alfred Fernandez. Sergeant Fernandez worked with the police department from 1968 to 1989, 21 years of service. Al passed away this past Saturday, so we were certainly saddened by that news, and our condolences to the Fernandez family. He was living down in Florida. That was his retirement home for the last several years. So again, our condolences to their family. And just, just finally, I just, I just want to make note, today is my 40th anniversary, Tocco Police Department. It's pretty incredible when I look back, all the changes, not only in policing, but in the village itself in the past 40 years. But the one constant has been that I've been privileged to work with some incredible police officers, men and women of the police department, active members now and retired members like Sergeant Fernandez that I just spoke about, who, whose dedication to this village and service is beyond any kind of reproach. It's been a true pleasure, not only to work with these individuals, but then the honor to lead them the last 19-plus years. I couldn't ask for anything more. It's, it's been quite a journey. It's not quite over yet, but we are getting towards the end. And, you know, when I turned, put on this uniform 40 years ago, I remember the tremendous pride I had my first day, and I'm glad to say I still feel that pride today. So whatever time left, you will continue to get the same effort that I gave in 1982 on October 3rd. You'll continue to get that effort for the rest of my career. And I thank the village for all their support throughout the years, all the elected officials throughout the years. It's been quite a journey, and, you know, I look back at the career and just, just briefly, you know, I saw some things, some people at their very worst, humanity at its very worst, the evil that, you know, humans could do to one another, the acts of violence. But I've seen some incredible acts of kindness. I've seen courage, you know, of police officers, but also victims of crimes and witnesses to crime, so good Samaritans who have stepped up in a crisis. So I've seen a lot, and I have to say, the good has outweighed the bad by far. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy anniversary, Chief. Superintendent?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Want to congratulate John for celebrating his 40th as well. I thought I was going to make it simple, but I can't.
I think you can.
Touch on a couple of things first. With everything going on, all the celebration, all the awards, I have to talk about leaf pickup. But with that said, let me get that over with, so everybody has a clear understanding. This is leaf season with this cold snap upon us. Leaves are going to be falling soon. So DPW will begin their leaf pickup October 15th to December 1st. Please place your leaves on the street up against a curb, work with your neighbor, consolidate these piles, so we don't have piles everywhere. There's minimal parking in Toccoho. We don't want to take up all these parking spots. Please not over-storm catch bases. When it rains, we want that water to go somewhere. Not around fire hydrants, please. That's another no-no. And it can still be placed in paper leaf bags, biodegradable bags, no plastic bags, no rocks, stumps, or limbs, please. We have no schedule. People ask us what the schedule is. Well, we start on the south side, we work our way up to the north side, then we go back to the south side, we work our way up to the north side. So it's a revolving circle. There's no set dates. When we complete the sections is when we'll get to you. And please, don't park vehicles over these piles of leaves, because if you park the cars over them, we're not going to get, be able to get to them. But most importantly, people don't realize that all these cars have catalytic converters. These catalytic converters get red hot, and parked over dry leaves, you could start a fire, it could be very dangerous. So please, no parking cars over leaves. DPW Day. We're excited about that. We get to, everybody could get to meet, the men and women, I could finally say women, of the DPW Department that serves you every day. Saturday, October 15th, between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM at Main Street Park. In attendance will be magician, DJ, obstacle course for children, face painting, equipment, and vehicles will be displayed. I think the adults enjoy it more than the children, but yes, they are invited to also sit in behind the equipment. Trolley rides throughout the village, beautification committee, environmental committee, and many, many more vendors. So please... committee, and many, many more vendors. So please, come and join us. It was a great turnout last year. So many people had showed up. It was a great event. This past weekend, I know the mayor will touch a little bit more about it, but Broken Bow had their annual chili cook-off. And congratulations to the Tocco Police Department for winning it. But I also want to give kudos to one of our team members, George Joseph, who was our master chef, and to all that attended the DPW and giving it their best. Last but not least, thank you for helping us support breast cancer awareness. Breast Cancer Awareness Month is October, and it's our annual campaign to raise awareness about the impact that breast cancer has on all of us. The DPW men and women will be styling pink throughout the month of October. So if you see them, just give them a wave and just give them a thumbs up in support of breast cancer awareness. But thank you for helping me with this campaign as well, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
There's a question?
Frank, I have a question, actually. I got from a resident just now. They would like to know on the app, on the Sustainable Westchester app, about, it says recycling, that as of October 1st, metal will not be picked up anymore. Is that correct?
I think we're continuing to pick up metal.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're not going by that schedule. The men had decided to continue picking up metal.
Okay, so metal will be picked up?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. May I have a library report? Not sure who's doing it.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, and the community members. In honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, we are holding ourselves a dance class on Tuesday, October 4th at 5:30 PM in the community center. Instructor Dylan Gravel will guide dancers throughout their steps. And we also had a cooking program, which we're planning to do it, but we were not able to do during that time period. But on October 19, Mayor Omira Andino will demonstrate how to make and use the classic Puerto Rican sauce, sofrito. And in month of October, as you know, there are a lot of events, special Italian Heritage Month, and Indian Festival Diwali is this month also. So on October 12th at 5:00 PM, I will be doing a cooking program where I will show how to make Indian dessert, which we call it burfi. It's like a fudge, Indian fudge. We call it burfi. And it's at 5:00 PM. And then we have Italian, on it for Italian Heritage Month on October 24th, Ms. Elaine is going to share her family's recipe for Italian gravy, also known as tomato sauce, a base for many delicious Italian dishes.
I love that.
And we have a special event, the Headless Horsemen of White Plains, with the storyteller Jonathan Crook, Thursday, October 13 at 6:00 PM in the Tocco Community Center. And Understanding Architect through October 6th and Wednesday, October 26 at 5:00 PM. This is an eight-week program, and we are on week three. And this program is presented by Carolina Fonseca, and she's guiding people through all aspects of architect. And we also have for middle school students, online financial literacy, which is going to start on October 20. It's a six-session program with Lee Hyatt. He's a teacher. And he's going to talk to the student about basic financial practices and life skills. And for our teens, we have a very special program for them, Dungeons and Dragons, which I never, I have no idea what this involves. But our librarian, she, Ms. Maryam, she knows about this program, and you don't believe it. We had, it's like, she only has had a list, take only six people. But due to overwhelming demand, we are now offering a second Dungeon and Dragon program at the library for ages 11 to 17. And interested teens, they can sign up for the waiting list. And next program is on October 28. And if you have any question, contact Ms. Maryam at the reference. And we have a graphic novel club for the teenagers. The books are available. And for the children's, we have very special story time that once, it's going to be tomorrow. We're supposed to be in the park, but I think due to weather, we changed it. And this program is going to be, Ms. Elaine is joining Mayor Andino and Senator Meyer to celebrate what we have in common and respect for all the differences. And then we have a dentist story time. Ms. Joan will show you how to have a healthy smile. And then we have a Diwali story time, which I am going to share why we celebrate Diwali and their traditions and stories. And if anybody wants to dress up in Indian traditional costume, you're welcome to. And pumpkin patch story time in the park. So there are all these special story times beside our regular Tuesday and Friday story time. And as for adults, we have like Mondays, zumba, tai chi. And we are also doing the virtual cardio dance classes, Bollywood, Bangra cheer yoga on Thursdays, and memoir writing tomorrow also. If you have any question, just call the library and hope you can join all the programs.
Thank you, Swarish.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
No.
Do you have anything, Camille?
Yes, I just wanted to remind residents that the resident parking permits expire November 30. Our Deputy Clerk Jackie Coretti will begin applications on November 1st.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. David Burke.
Just a couple of quick updates. One, as I see that you guys approved the application for the JCAP grant, something that I know a lot of residents don't want to see is our new court window. And it came out really nice. So I want to thank Connie and Carolina for actually putting that together. And it really does look beautiful. It's bulletproof grass. And it, you know, really, it's nice aesthetics for the village. But I know a lot of people don't actually want to go see it.
And more importantly, it's accessible.
Yes. Some people do want to see, and they want to play on, is the new Main Street Park. You can see that the equipment's there, the safety surfaces in. They're going to be doing the landscaping this week. There is a couple of punch list items that we do have in regards to the safety surfacing and a couple of other things in the equipment that we need to take care of prior to opening it. But it is coming soon. I wish I had better news and an exact date, but we're trying to kind of finish those up. And you'll see it soon.
Okay, great, thanks. And the tennis court as well. Okay, thank you. And we do have a few dates to remind you of. Superintendent DeMarco already mentioned DPW Day. Please make a note, Saturday, October 15th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. On that same day, we do have the Senior Bazaar from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM at the Tocco Community Center. So there's lots happening from 8:00 AM all the way up to 5:00 PM. And you can do both. The Creepy Candy Crawl, I know that Trustee Cronin, we'll talk a little bit more about that. But Saturday, October 29th, from 4:00 to 5:30 on Main Street. Last year, we had upwards of 400-plus people. So it should be a fun time. And just to, you know, a regular board meeting on November 7th. So keep that in mind, those dates at 7:00 PM. And then that'll take us to Board trustee reports, starting with trustee Engelbert.
Okay, wonderful. All right. So I always feel like folks are saying she's going to be too long and too chatty. And of course, here I am already wasting words and being too long and too chatty. But anyhow, okay. So let's start with the Tocco Public Library. Everyone knows how I feel about those folks in that service here in our wonderful village. I do want to put an additional plug in this year for the Friends of the Tocco Public Library. These folks are a critical organization that spearheads fundraising for our beloved library. And they serve as a source of volunteers to support the continued delivery of such kind of amazing, high-quality services. So I strongly, I implore, I beg, kind of folks out into the committee to kind of purchase a membership, renew their membership, and quite frankly, even better, show up November 2nd at 6:30 for the next meeting of the Friends of the Tocco Public Library. The next bit, another opportunity for volunteering and service for everyone. We are now planning for the Taste of Tocco. And this is going to be a spring dining event that will benefit the library and the Beautification Committee. Many hands make light work. So if you are interested in volunteering on a committee which will launch Westchester's premier dining experience, please contact me, Dr. Cronin, or our own wonderful Swarish Panshadha to get involved. Last bit on the library, September 19th was the last board meeting for the library. And I have to say, I attended. And it was a really amazing group of individuals who are working super hard on completing the strategic plan for the library. So they're going to set the priorities for the library, set the direction for the library, and really ensure the continued vibrancy of that organization. They're also working on setting the priorities for the ongoing renovation of the library. And I wanted to personally thank the DPW, our village administrator, Amy Pollan, Senator Mayor, the Community Fund, Damon Mayer, and a cast of thousands for their continued support in these efforts. It really, truly, you've heard me say this a million times, in many ways, I see the library as kind of the heart of our community. So sharing that heart, of course, is our Tocco Community Center. And I'm certainly going to get John Galuzzi to come on down for one of these meetings sooner or later. But there is an absolute bonanza of activities at our community center over the next month. Other trustees are going to speak on many of them. So I don't want to steal kind of any thunder kind of there. But we're talking, you know, vaccine clinics and seniors' bazaars, a library book program on Thursday, October 11th, that Headless Horseman reading will happen, which is pretty awesome stuff, right? Pumpkin painting on the 18th. And on November 2nd, from 8:00 to 5:00, there will be a Lifeline screening. And this is about kind of a health screening for you to kind of get ahead of anything that might be kind of going on with you, often often related to kind of your heart. And I'm not a physician, so, but there's lots of things that it will tell you kind of about, which is good stuff to know. You can book your appointment there at lifelinescreening.com or 1-800-679-5192 to book your screening. And of course, last but not least, is our own wonderful Tocco History Committee. And Nick Zanzano just got back from the Association of Public Historians of New York State, their annual conference in Kingston. And, you know, if you don't have enough reason to come to our board meetings every month, he will be presenting on the findings from that at the next meeting in November. Nick also attended the Westchester Historical Roundtable last month and toward the Westchester County Archives Collection. And this group is preparing for the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution in Westchester. My goodness, I do remember my own attending of a parade in 1976 with my little revolutionary girl outfit kind of back in the day. But this is actually really important work. Nick also gave a presentation on Tocco Before and After, Part Two, to the Tocco Seniors on Thursday, September 9th. And the committee, they're very busy. They are in the process of ordering equipment to better kind of manage the archiving process of our history. Now, cool stuff. The benches for the Stone Mill Complex have arrived, and they will be unveiled at a date kind of coming soon. So stay tuned kind of on that. And a big thank you to the Borough's Welcome Foundation for underwriting the cost of those benches. DPW Day, our Tocco History Committee will be there as well as at the Senior Bazaar. So certainly come on and take a peek at the archive at those wonderful events. The Facebook activity is really rock star. If you didn't think a history committee could rock social media, you haven't seen our Tocco Committee. They are continuing to collect our photos and archives and information. So if you do have, you can step in your own personal archives, tuccoarchive@gmail.com is the place to go. And if you want to get even more involved, which I encourage everyone to do, Wednesdays, 9:30, 12, out here in Village Hall. So that's it. On to you, Dr. Allen.
Thank you, trustee Engelbert. Deputy Mayor Howe.
All righty.
I love the enthusiasm on there.
Moving forward for zoning and planning committees, the meetings are going to now be in person. And on Zoom, the working meetings will remain in person. So zoning meeting is going to be held October 12th at 7:30. And there will be three new variances introduced, one at 41 Sylvan Avenue to widen a driveway, one at Sixth Circle Road for a finished basement, and one at 8 Oakland Avenue, an area variance for a high fence. On the planning board, that'll be held October 18th. There'll be the return of the site plan for 25 Main Street. That's in the building where Growlers is. At 111 Lake Avenue, they're adding a license for an acupuncture employee. And at 170 Marble Dale, I think I spoke about this before, it's a revised site plan for retaining wall. I think that's the old, there was a restaurant there, I'm forgetting the name, Maria Chianti. All right. So that, you could see that building has been taken down. And you could see why there's a need for a retaining wall. So if anybody wants to have a peek at what that will look like, they should go to the planning board meeting and see the design. For Eastchester School System, School District, this month, the BOE is hosting a series of coffees. I think I mentioned them at the last meeting. So they are focusing on students and then on parents at every school level. All of the dates, and it will run from October through to December, are on the Eastchester School District website. We've had two requests from the Eastchester School District for volunteers. They are looking for wise internship hosts. And this is a program for high school seniors where they work 24 hours a week for four to six weeks from May to June. They had a decline due to COVID in the people who were hosting students. We had one this year. She was a great help for the Tocco Challenge. So I encourage people to reach out to Julie Myers at the high school. Or if you need help connecting, I'm happy to do that. Another volunteer request is for individuals to present at the Fifth Annual Career and Business Night, which will be held November 2nd at 7:00 PM. Again, they're looking for volunteers to tell kids about, you know, careers in business. That's being organized by Lauren Stippo at the high school. And again, if you would like to contact her and need help, I'm here to help you. The student government will be hosting a blood drive on October 12th at 2:30 to 7:00 PM. If you'd like to schedule an appointment to take part in that, you can go to the Red Cross website and enter the sponsor keywords, Eastchester High School. It'll come up, and you'll be able to make an appointment online. I just wanted to remind everybody, we have an election in November. November 8th is Election Day. Absentee requests have to be in by October 24th. You can return them in person or by mail. And you have to have the return of the absentee ballot in by November 8th by 9:00 PM. Registration to vote will be open until October 14th. You can do that by putting in an application in the post. And the postmark has to be in by October 14th. You can do that in person at the Board of Elections or online at the state government site. Early voting will be held between October 29th and November 6th. There's elections up for governor of New York. So that's pretty important, as well as state senate and state assembly person. And of course, what will be on the ballot for Tocco in November is a question put to the public to move the election date from March to November. In addition to the amazing programs we have in October, I just wanted to mention that October is also Drug Prevention Awareness Month. And so the library, the village, and the Bronxville, Eastchester, Tocco, Stronger Together Coalition will be hosting an Author Night with Judy Turkheimer. Judy has put out a book entitled Finding Myself in a Nightmare: A Mother's Healing Journey. And it tells the story of how she went through having a daughter who was addicted to heroin and how, you know, she had to deal with that as a parent, and how she helped her overcome the addiction. So that'll be November 5th at the community center from between 2:00 and 5:00 PM. And finally, I would just like to thank the community for an incredible turnout for the Tocco Challenge. We had spectacular weather. We had 490... Tuckahoe Challenge. We had spectacular weather. We had 497 people register. So it was really incredible. It was the first year we had 100% participation from the board. So I wanted to thank all of my colleagues here. We had the highest sponsor support. We brought in an additional $2,000 more than last year from our sponsors. And overall, the race brought in just a couple thousand dollars over $30,000. So we're still doing the finance and paying all the bills, but it was very successful. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about, you know, things that were really wonderful to see this year. We had over 150 kids under the age of 18 register. So we have never had that many kids in the race. And I think that's what made it a lot of fun. So we always wanted to keep this as a local community event. And of those 497 people who registered, 300 of them were from Tuckahoe, Eastchester, and Bronxville, and 185 were from Tuckahoe. We did have one person from Missouri come. You know, they were visiting, and they ran the race. So that was kind of fun, too. So we would never have this event without the incredibly dedicated volunteers. So I wanted to thank personally Sophia Chiapetta, Elaine Gary, Deborah Conkling, Donald Crosby, Bob McCarthy, Ginger Crosby, Jenna Handel, Shannon McDonough, who made the beautiful banners that were up at the center thanking the sponsors during Bib Pickup, John Galuzzi, Daryl Taylor, Susan Chiamara, Ava, Susan's granddaughter, Nicholas Eiler, Renee Arana, who sang a beautiful rendition of our National Anthem, and BSA Troop 19, who were always there for us. We had amazing sponsors. In addition to the Raffiani family, which has been a sponsor for many years now, our platinum sponsor, we had two new organizations be platinum sponsors, Chestnut Markets and the New York Presbyterian, they just changed their name, so Westchester Medical Group. So that was phenomenal. And Westchester Medical Group, the New York Presbyterian, Westchester Medical Group, they were there and handed out bags to all of the people who registered for the race. For our gold sponsors, we had Broken Bow Brewery. And it was just an amazing sight to walk into the brewery after the race and see a sea of purple shirts. So that was a lot of fun as well. Our silver sponsors were AI Design, Assemblywoman Amy Pollan, Eliud, Karen Med Spa and Laser, New Row Runners, Remax, San Pietro Wines, State Senator Shelley Mayer, and Westchester Tile &amp; Marble. And then rounding it out was our bronze sponsors, Angelina's Restaurant, Citron Brothers Plumbing, County Legislature Damon Marr, County Executive George Latimer, Koala Park Daycare, Marble Hall Apartments, PM Collision, Totally Wired, Tucked Away, Westchester Funeral Home, Transform Fitness and Recovery, 95 Lake Street LLC, The Dance Gallery, and Yoga Six. And we also had businesses giving out some great prizes, which we raffled off as we were going through registration, Cowers, Equinox, Pasquale's Deli, Marriott Spring Hills, Gigi Nails, Mama Asanta, and Sweet Treats. So I can't imagine, you know, getting a better community participation than we had. And of course, you know, when you see everything that goes on in the day, we would not have been able to do this without our police. The Tuckahoe Police Department was there in force and had a lot of fun. Both Lieutenant Rhoda and Lieutenant Zerolnick were there. And the company that does our race timing, the guy stepped aside, and he said, you know, that lead motorcycle, nice touch. So it was very impressive and greatly coordinated. And of course, our DPW has to be there. There's, you know, a million things to be done with cornering off the place where the race happens, making sure we have tables set up for everybody, making sure the water is at the water stop. So thank you very much to the guys on the DPW who were there that day. Really appreciate it. And as the race gets bigger, you know, it's even more important to have such great skilled workers there. So thank you so much, both to the police and the DPW. Also wanted to do a special shout out to Eastchester Town Supervisor Tony Colavita, to trustees Taylor and Engelbert for their donations to the race. So I really, you know, want to thank everybody. It was a spectacular day. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Taylor?
On Tuesday, September 20th, the Tuckahoe Housing Authority held their quarterly meeting. Dr. Kimberly Joyce Bernard and Tahisha Jackson attended their first meeting, Tuckahoe Housing Authority meeting, as new members of the Tuckahoe Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Chairman Donna Walchop was reelected as chairman, board chairman, board vice chairman. John Lee was reelected, and Mark Kaminsky was reelected as legal counsel. Most of the renovations from the damage from Hurricane Ida has been completed, which included replacing all the boilers, heating, and hot water. And all the basements have been repaired, renovated, repaired, and the rec room was renovated completely. HUD did a REACT inspection at the Tuckahoe Housing Authority. REACT is Real Estate Assessment Center. The inspection was a physical health and safety inspection. And the Tuckahoe Housing Authority received 81.3 out of 100%, and was commended by HUD. On September 29th, the veterans honor the Gold Star Mothers and the families at the Gold Star Monument on Route 29. A reminder that all veterans who live or work in New York State Senate District 37 are encouraged to attend the Veterans Advisory Council Kickoff Meeting on Saturday, October 8th at 10:00 AM, sponsored by Senator Shelley Mayer's office at the White Plains Public Library. RSVP is requested. Feel free to submit questions or concerns to the senator's office if you are unable to attend in person. Lastly, two local veterans passed last month. Former commander of the American Legion, Post 979, Joe Maman, and former chairman of the Westchester County Veterans Alliance, Irv Breitbart. Our condolences go out to the family and fellow veterans on the loss of Joe Maman and Irv Breitbart. ECAP continues to provide outdoor, in the park, sports and physical activities to the students engaged in this after-school program, which ends in three weeks. ECAP registered 18 students for the free online tutoring from the Princeton Review. The Junior League of Bronxville in Eastchester will be starting a weekly reading program for the after-school students. They will be providing the books and volunteers to read with the students. The Community Fund Three-on-Three Basketball Tournament, October 16th in the Main Street Park. And ECAP will have 18 participating. And the Food Pantry is now starting to organize for Thanksgiving and Christmas, and would gladly receive any donations anyone has to contribute to those dates. I just want to say congrats to Officer Peter Costa on the passing of his motorcycle training. Condolences to former Police Sergeant Alfred Fernandez and the Fernandez family. Congrats to Chief Costanzo on 40 years with the Tuckahoe Police Department. And that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Cronin?
Good evening, everybody. So the Candy Crawl, the Creepy Candy Crawl will be on October 29th, which is a Saturday from 4:00 to 5:30. So if you remember, last year, we turned much of Village Hall into a very creepy showscape for young people to come and do some trick-or-treating at our stores and the residences along Main Street. So we'll be doing that again. Main Street will be closed, as will the Main Street parking lot across the street. So you please plan accordingly. And if anybody would like to volunteer, we definitely could use the volunteers. The other thing I will say is that if anybody would like to donate candy, we gave out almost 10,000 pieces of candy in an hour and a half last year. No joke. And so if anybody would like to give out candy or donate candy, I can come pick it up from you. You can drop it here at Village Hall. I'm sure the Village Hall staff would love that. Or you can drop it at my house at 88 Maple Avenue. But yes, I am taking donations of candy. So but if you do want to volunteer, you can contact me either through the village website, or my email, or through social media. And that, again, will be October 29th. So everybody, everyone must participate and come dressed up. The Senior Bazaar, again, is October 15th, from 10 to, it's from 10 to 4. The seniors are still accepting donations for sales and for their white elephants. So if you have costume jewelry, designer purses, or anything that you would like to donate to the seniors so that they could sell it, and this is their biggest fundraiser of the year, let me know. Again, I can come and pick it up. Or you can drop it off at the senior center at Father Fata Hall at the Assumption Church on Tuesdays or Thursdays. Really, just this week or next week, because by next week, they need to have everything set. So the beautifica, oh, sorry, the seniors will be hosting their Halloween Mexican Lunch on October 27th. The beautification committee is still on hiatus. Their next meeting won't be till the end of this month, so they haven't met. TESSC would like to welcome their new high school students. TESSC is the Sustainability and Environmental Committee. They would like to welcome their two new high school students, Henry Podell and Miriam Khan from Tuckahoe and Eastchester High Schools respectively. They, I won't go into the whole discussion of the ESCO being back up and running through Westchester Powers, since we had a presentation on that. So I'll move on. This month, we lost one of our seniors from Four Union, Jorge Madden, or Madden. He was 97 years old and a very kind gentleman, a real gentleman. He also happened to be the grandfather of Officer Brian Madden. So our condolences to the whole Madden family. And so, moving on, just want to make note that we've created an event calendar. We have a lot going on in the village over the next couple of weeks. Fall is a really kind of fun-filled, fun-packed time of the year. So just know that if you look on our social media, there is a calendar of events. And so you all should know that there was an Oktoberfest scheduled at Growlers Bar and Grill for this last weekend, but it was canceled because of the storm. So that has moved to next weekend. I believe that's next weekend. Yeah. And the car show, there was a classic car show also scheduled for Sunday, and that's been moved to the 16th. Okay, this is, oh, so this is Italian Heritage Month. So congratulations to, yeah, Happy Italian Heritage Month. It is also Bullying Prevention Month, and the school, both school districts have quite a few programs about bullying prevention. I want to wish everyone a Happy Diwali, a Happy Halloween. This is the high holy days for the Jewish community here in Tuckahoe. Last week was Rosh Hashanah, and this week is Yom Kippur. So I wish everybody a Happy and Safe Fest. And I want to just say thank you to the chief for your 40 years of service. We really appreciate everything that you do. Thank you.
So as you can see, there is a lot going on. I just want to take a moment before I go over my report briefly to thank this board. You see all of the work that they're doing. There's so much going on in the village. And they give not just their time and their talent, but they give their hearts to the work that they do. So I just want to say thank you, Trustee Engelbert, Deputy Mayor Howell, Trustee Taylor, and Trustee Cronin. This is not easy work. They make $5,000 a year. I make $7,000 a year doing this. So this clearly is not, we're not doing this to get rich. We do this because we love our community and we want to contribute to it. So thank you all. So I have a few things to update you guys on, trying to take, it's great when you have a board that's so active, because I can say, oh, I could knock that off. I don't have to talk about that. The thing on top of the list is we are having our vaccine clinics, again, at the request of many residents. So we will be offering the same pharmacy that came the last time, Naziren, I believe, is how you pronounce the name of the pharmacy. They're going to come and offer COVID vaccines, the Pfizer and Moderna, the flu, high-dose flu for seniors, shingles and pneumonia, on October 12th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and October 22nd from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the community center. And more information will be posted on our website, as well as our social media pages. So look out for that. You can always call Village Hall as well if you need some more information. I was honored to serve as one of the judges at the Chili Cookoff at Broken Bow Brewery. They were actually raising funds for the Ray Pfeiffer Foundation, who supports 9/11 first responders with medical needs. And some people didn't know that. So I wanted to make sure that that was noted. A very worthy cause. Congratulations to Tuckahoe Police Officer Madden and sous chef McCann for going home with the first prize, first-place prize. The fundraiser raised $4,200. So that was a really great turnout, given the weather. We were concerned that the weather would deter people, but clearly it did not. And it was the perfect weather for chili. So people were out. Also, just wanted to give you guys an update. It's not really much of an update, but to acknowledge that, you know, there are a few people who've contacted us about flood mitigation efforts. And we want you to know that we have not forgotten those efforts. The wheels of government on all levels churn slowly. But we do have another visit with the Army Corps of Engineers on October 19th, as a follow-up to the previous meeting that they had, you know, they came to the village. We also submitted information to the county, who's gathering data on communities that were impacted for the purposes of obtaining state funding to address flooding in Westchester as a whole. As you know, every municipality impacts another one. So they're looking at ways to have a more comprehensive way of addressing the flooding. I also want to acknowledge some of the holidays. Some were already mentioned. But I want to pay particular attention to Hispanic Heritage Month and pay tribute to my parents, who came here from Puerto Rico when they were a young couple with the hopes of, you know, having a better life for their family. And so I pay tribute to them, and I honor them today and this month because of them. You know, my brothers and sister and I had opportunities that we probably would not have had if they stayed in Puerto Rico. So I'm really grateful for that. And, you know, educational and work opportunities that I likely would never have had. So I owe them that, and more. My mother was a stay-at-home mom, and she dedicated her life to us. She barely even let me learn how to cook until I left home, because she wanted me to be in the books. So I am grateful to her for that. And my father, who fought in Vietnam, came back and became a mail carrier. And so he, they worked hard, you know, with very little means. And because of them, I'm able to do what I do. So I'm grateful. And I also want to acknowledge Italian Heritage, American Heritage Month. I actually did my, what is it, the ancestry.com, and 12% Italian. So that's why I love so much pasta, I realize. There are a lot of events in Eastchester that begin on Friday and go through Monday with live entertainment, as well as a parade and fireworks on Sunday. So look out for that information. And Happy Halloween, to those of you who love that holiday. And I want to acknowledge the Indian Festival, Diwali Festival of Lights. So, and Yom Kippur. Have an easy fest. The Tuckahoe Challenge, I cannot, I know that Deputy Mayor went on and on about it, because there was just so many people who contributed to it. But really and truly, I want everyone to really know the work that Deputy Mayor puts into this, and the heart that she puts into it, and how she brings so many people together is really exemplary. And it's really indicative of the work that this board is doing and that she's doing. So thank you, Deputy Mayor, for raising 30-plus thousand dollars. That's real money. It's real money. So for those of you who've been waiting to see what's going to be at the home of the Old Quarry Restaurant, I communicated with the owner of the new restaurant. His name is Luca. The restaurant name is Boleria, is a Spanish tapas place coming. So I know a lot of people are excited about that. He and I have been talking back and forth about a ribbon cutting. He still has to get through the permit process, fortunately. You know, we got to go get those permits. So he is working diligently and hopes to open in these coming weeks. And also, my condolences to the family of Richard Berardi, who is 93 years old. And also, my condolences to the family of Richard Berardi, who is 93 years old, lifelong resident of Takahoe, served as building inspector, village trustee, code enforcement officer for City of White Plains for 26 years, who passed away. So our condolences go out to the family, and as well as to retired Officer Fernandez's family, as well as the police department as a whole. And Chief, 40 years, you don't look a day past 25. Congratulations, and thank you for all of the work that you've done here, and for the type of department that we have that is others model themselves after. Thank you, Chief. So having said that, it brings us to the opportunity to address the board on any non-agenda items, or agenda items. Anybody? Sure, Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. First, congratulations to the Chief in the back. Every time you say "Chief," I perk up. Congratulations on 40 years. I want to thank the mayor and the two trustees that attended the fire department promotional and award ceremony last week. It was, your support was greatly appreciated by the members. And unfortunately, as I said, firefighter Polero was unable to make it tonight, but thank you for recognizing him at your meeting. I get a lot of questions when we have EMS calls. Why are they sending so many? There's two police cars, an ambulance, a paramedic car.
We get those questions too.
It's because of outcomes like this, you know? In our award ceremony, we had several cardiac arrests that turned into saves, because when those type of calls happen, you need the extra hands, whether it's just for lifting or, you know, preparing medications. So it's important, and it works, you know, because the police officers are on the road, the firehouses, there's five of them, so there's a good chance that there's a firehouse where you live, and the ambulance is in the center of town. So then, you know, they'll get there when they get there. So, that's the answer, just, you know, when you have a serious call, you need the extra help. The next thing, as the DPW superintendent mentioned, it's leaf season. Please, as he mentioned, don't park cars because of the catalytic converters, they're very hot, and they'll start the leaf, leaves on fire. And also, try not to block your fire hydrants. If you have gardeners, ask them not to block them, because at 2:00 in the morning, when it's raining and dark out, they're hard enough to see without having other things on top of them. Okay?
Thank you.
One last thing, starting Sunday, October 9th, is Fire Prevention Week. So just ask everybody, please check your smoke detectors. If you have batteries in them, when you change the clocks, change the batteries. A lot of new smoke detectors are 10 years. It has a 10-year battery. When the battery goes out, it just goes in the garbage and you buy a new one. All right?
All right. Thank you. And I'm glad that you're here, Chief, because I would like to let everyone know that the fire chief, Chief Tween, not Chief Costanzo, and I have been communicating back and forth, looking at possible dates to come and do fire safety awareness in Takahoe. I've gotten some residents who live in buildings in particular, who've been concerned about fires that had happened in the city, or the fire that happened in Miami where there were fatalities, and they asked if the fire department would come and do fire safety, a discussion on fire safety and answer questions, and he was gracious enough to say, just give me a date. So I am working with the Community Center to get that, those dates to see, if you're available. And also, there have been a lot of questions about the fire department's budget, so I'm glad the commissioners are here, so that I would invite you to come, or have somebody come and explain the fire department's budget, because people get confused, it's like, is that part of the Village budget? Is that a different thing? So that would be helpful. People just don't always watch the fire department meetings, so it makes it a little more difficult. So if you guys would be willing to do that, that would be really great.
Sure. The budget gets passed at our next meeting later this month.
Right, and there's a public hearing on October 18th, I believe?
October 18th, that's, so the board in the September meeting has a proposed budget, and then there's time for comments. If you go to our website, you could see our budget, eastchesterfd.com, so eastchesterfd is in firedepartment.com. It's an updated website, if you were there more than a year ago, it was like one or two links and very simple. Now it's like a full website that our secretary is updating constantly. So they could see the budget on there, and, you know, if they have questions, the commissioners at eastchesterfd.com, that goes to all five of our fire commissioners. And just to answer that question about is the fire department part of Takahoe, it's like, we cover Takahoe, but we're a fire district, so we cover Eastchester, Takahoe, and Bronxel with five firehouses, staff 24 hours a day, every fire apparatus has two career firefighters on it, and so that's how we operate. It's, you know, a captain, two lieutenants, and 11 firefighters working at all times. And if there's no vacations or no sick leave, there'll be a couple extra guys.
Thanks, thanks so much, Chief. Appreciate it. Anyone else would like to address the board? Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, he did have his hand up first?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Nice to see all of you here today. I come before you with a level of frustration, discontent, and level of disrespect that I've been treated by.
May I ask for your name and address? It's okay.
My name is Frank DeBrino, I've been a resident of Takahoe since 2008, I'm also a proud veteran of the US Air Force, and, thank you. I'd like to address a dilemma which could be easily rectified if certain individuals would use a little bit of common sense, understanding, and compassion, which unfortunately, I did not have the opportunity to encounter with certain individuals that seem to display a sense of arrogance and smugness towards me when I address my situation. I understand that a landlord is supposed to provide parking for their tenants. Unfortunately, and I do not begrudge my new landlord, I'm being charged, or he is charging tenants, in my opinion, an amount of money that I cannot afford. So therefore, earlier this year, I respectfully came to the Village, spoke with both Bill and Jackie regarding my situation, and began the Abbott and Costello merry-go-round routine of finger pointing, because nobody wanted to take any sense of responsibility as they were passing it on to each other. Finally, the short of it is, Jackie said to me back in late May, early June, I cannot issue two parking permits, because at that time I had two vehicles. I could issue one permit. Unfortunately, she was not able to issue me my permit because my registration had my PO box on it. She said, change your registration to have your legal, physical address, and I could issue the permit. I let the summer pass, I sold my second vehicle, I'm down to one vehicle, and today, I came back to speak with Jackie, and she hastily had me refer to her supervisor, where, again, I'm on this merry-go-round, where repeatedly to me was said, your landlord is supposed to provide you with parking, you chose not to accept it. I'm trying to explain the situation, I cannot afford it, and again, repeated the same nonsensical word salad of, your landlord is supposed to provide you with parking, you chose not to accept it. If I was able to afford the parking, I would not stand here before you. I cannot afford it, and it sounds to me that indirectly, the Village of Takahoe and certain individuals are trying to force my hand to park my car in the provided parking space, putting me further in debt, which I feel is very un-American. So I come before you, where again, I'm sure we could find a common sense ground resolution to this dilemma.
So Mr. DeBrino, I'd like to ask you to do me a favor, if you would give your phone number to our clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
And that way I can get back to you, because I need to look at all of the factors, I don't, I can't make a decision right here and have to talk to the board. So would you do that? Would you give that to Camille? And then I will, I will be in touch with you.
And I mean no disrespect to anyone, but I was brought up to be very forthcoming and honest and speak without trying to sugarcoat anything, because I feel that the facts get lost in sugarcoating. And again, I did not come here to point fingers or agitate anyone, but I feel that as a resident of Takahoe, and especially a disabled American veteran, I should have been treated with a lot more respect. I served my country, and I feel like now I'm being spit upon.
Okay. So I will, I will ask that you give her number, give her your number, and I will call you back to get more information from you.
Thank you, ma'am.
This way. Yeah. Anyone else would like to address the board?
My name is Mark Visconti, and after watching the last Village meeting, I felt that I had no choice but to come down here and speak to the five people. Mayor, I'm fully aware that you were not born in this Village, but if you please indulge me, let me tell you a little history about someone who was born in this Village. My father, Edward Visconti, born December 17th, 1925, right around the corner here on Columbus Avenue, okay? Delivered in the apartment by a midwife that lived next door, okay? Eight children, two bedroom apartment. Proud son of two legal immigrants that came here from Italy, the right way, not what's going on today, okay? He went to Main Street School, he was a member of Assumption Church, all his sacraments there, was an altar boy there. Continued on to Tocco High School. In the spring of 1944, my father was drafted as a senior right out of Tocco High School, okay? Taken. Did his, so, in-service training, sent to Germany. Two years in World War II, okay? Two years, gave up, two years of his life, an 18-year-old teenager, ripped out of high school and sent to another country. Up until that point, never left the Village of Tocco. All right? Now, this is a picture of him, underneath his banner. Fortunately, my father died in 96 and 1/2 on June 23rd this year, all right? And I can't tell you how angry I am at the five of you for not putting his banner back up there, okay? I don't know how, if this man was still alive, how I could explain to a 96 and 1/2-year man, you see him smiling there, why his banner's not going up, okay? There is no reason for it. And Darryl, I'm going to point to you, because when you ran for office, you were proud to put on your campaign literature that you were law enforcement, okay? But let me tell you right to your face, a true law enforcement officer would never, never disrespect a veteran, and that's what you're all doing. You should be leading the charge as former law enforcement against all five of the people on that board to get those banners back up. It's a disgrace, you should be ashamed. When I filled out that application to get that banner put up for my father, not one spot on that application said it's going to go up for six months, seven months, whatever it was, never to be returned again. Okay? If someone said that to me, or any other great veteran here that's up on those banners, I don't think you would have had one of them. All right? At the last meeting, the one thing I will say, I agree with you, you said a nine-year-old girl, shamed you into putting your picture up there. Do you five people have a definition of a hero? Okay? What's a hero to you? My father, not because he's my flesh and blood, is a hero. That's a hero right there, okay? I didn't serve, but I'm proud of every veteran in the world, and what you people are doing is total disrespect to any veteran, and I take that very personal, very personal. And I can't see why this is being done, it's not done anywhere else. My father's name is also on the monument, Depot Square, Little Brass Black. Are you going to take that down? Are you going to remove that? My father and his brother also is up there, my Uncle Arnold, who was in Pearl Harbor and was lucky enough to be in a building and not one of the ships, and survived that. His banner also taken down. Can someone give me an answer why you refuse to put them back up?
So this is what I will say about this. First and foremost, I know everyone on this board has a deep respect for our veterans. Many, sir, I let you talk, now I'm going to speak. Everyone here has been touched by someone who's either gone to war, or who is now serving at, it's escaping me, West Point. Her daughter's just enrolled in West Point. The issue here is not that we're denying the veterans anything, the issue is that this was not a veterans program, sir. And so it was not going up because the veterans asked for the banners to go up, this was a Girl Scout program that was for everyone, and it got so divisive in this community, because other people, other than veterans, were being asked to be honored, that I, we as a board felt it divided the community. Do you see how you're coming up angry, because you're, you have a wrong impression about what this program was? It wasn't a veterans program, sir. So what we're doing is we're looking at ways that we could more tangibly address the acknowledgement and the needs of veterans, and we're having those discussions now. So I totally can feel how you're feeling, and can feel you're upset and your anger, but it's really misdirected. We did not, we did not dishonor veterans in any way, shape, or form. Okay? So, so when...
If you're not bringing back up, you're dishonoring them, man.
But, but we'll, we'll, we'll agree to disagree on that right now, and I do appreciate you coming forward and voicing, voicing your concerns. Thank you.
The five of you should be ashamed of yourselves. If you have some, who has, do you have someone in the military? You and Darryl should be screaming, okay? There's a hero right there. Not someone that ran for office and got elected, not a baseball player, not a football player, that's a hero. My father, a hero. Okay? Whoever's serving your family, God bless them, and you're not screaming bloody murder over this? Shame with you all. Shame with you all.
Would anyone else?
Anthony Laurie, 123 Waller Street, Takahoe. I myself, like Mr. Visconti's father, was born in this Village, so I'm native of this Village. I understand what went on, and I'm not here to discuss that. The thing was, I'm saying, last meeting, we had an individual come here to say, you plant the garden, and we'll put a picture up of you, and that's a hero. I think you heard that. There was someone said, plant the garden, we have a lot of money, we didn't give it to Mount Vernon or Michelle, we got gardens here. He says, the man's wife has put a garden over there by the Old Quarry on Young Place. But if you hang a picture of a person who plants a garden, and that's a hero to your words from him, that's sad. If you want to know what a hero is, I'm sure a lot of us know, states like South Dakota, North Dakota, Alaska, those are colder places, I mean freezing. And you want to see a hero? You see him like Anchorage, Alaska, or Tulley, Greenland, where it's six months days and six months nights, and there's a man walking around an aircraft all night long, and the wind is blowing, the snow is slapping him in the face, you think that's a picnic? Or take a look at the men that were in Vietnam. I sat in a foxhole many a nights, rain, slapping you in the face, rats running all around you in a foxhole. That's what someone you could think of, but not a person who's going to plant the garden and pull weeds out of it. Those are the guys that have suffered in the heat and the cold. Let them know that those are the heroes. I'm not even talking about the posters, I'm just talking about an individual come here and said that, if you plant the garden, we'll put a picture up of you and make you a hero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Vishi, 28 Main Art Street. You talk about hometown hero. I drive through towns, you know, villages all over Westchester, Potomac, Dutchess, all I see is servicemen. When did this become anybody could put their picture up there? Did it just happen? I mean...
Hi, Mr. Vishi, how are you? So the program is, is a private company, and they run this program, which was adopted by some Girl Scout troops. And so if you go to the program's website, you will see that anybody can be honored as a hometown hero. Doctors, store owners, EMT workers, you name it. And so every community has a different way of honoring heroes. There are towns in Alabama and Illinois that you can nominate anybody. Some towns like Eastchester are stuck only to veterans, and it really depends on how the Girl Scout, or whoever is sponsoring the program, decides to interpret this. But it was, it has not ever been just a veterans program. It's just that some places do veterans, and some places will do other people too. So when the Girl Scout troops came here, they presented this as a program that was open to all people who somebody considers a hero. And that's how the program evolved. So, you, what you're seeing is different interpretations, but if you go throughout the country... But if you go throughout the country, and so, I just want to make it clear that not every town does this. And some towns do it for a short period of time and some towns do it ongoing or some towns will take them down and put them back up. So, it's done differently in different places and that's just the way it is. But if you go to different places within the United States, all over the United States, you will see that sometimes they honor teachers and sometimes they honor post office, post office workers. So, it's a different program wherever it is, depending on whoever's running the program.
So, you're saying that because it's, you guys elected, you guys didn't bring it to the public and say, "Well, it's a hometown hero."
So, we didn't sponsor it.
No, the Girl Scouts did.
This was sponsored by the Girl Scouts. It was in their literature, in the literature, in the flyers that they...
They gave us the...
Yes. In the ads that they gave and in the way that they came and presented it at the board meeting, it was always open to anybody who somebody considered a hero. So, that is why one little girl decided to sponsor the librarians because during the pandemic, the librarians for her were their hero. And some people chose to honor the, the workers at the post office because of their work during the pandemic and their exposure to COVID-19 during the pandemic. What has made it controversial is that people have different interpretations of what a hero is, as we've just seen, right? This is a hero, this is not a hero. And we cannot continue to have this argument about what or what does not constitute a hero. Obviously, people have different interpretations. This causes a lot of discord in this, in this community. And why continue something that creates that kind of discord? That's the question I think at hand.
Yeah. Because all the communities stuck with the veterans.
Not all communities. That is not true. It is interpreted...
Listen, you tell me a community that didn't.
Well, I actually...
In, in West Chester County, Potomac, Dutchess? You don't know because I've been there.
I don't know what communities, Mr. Vischi.
It's all veterans. Veterans are first responders. That's all it is.
And that's fine, but that's not what the program was here and it's not what the program was in many, many places.
You guys ruined it.
Okay. Okay.
What are you going to tell that nine-year-old? What are you going to tell that nine-year-old girl that you're my hero, but I'm not putting up the banner anymore, my banner that sponsored you?
The nine-year-old girl sponsored me. I'm not a veteran. So, I'm not going back up there with, at all. It was a nine-year-old girl who, she honored me. And that became so controversial that people called the Girl Scouts, National Girl Scouts of America complaining that she, "How could you allow this to happen?" So, it's to the, to Trustee Conan's point, and I'll, I'll make this final point and then we'll move on. She, the Girl Scouts brought this forth as their, their program. They sponsored it. It was never a program just for veterans. They presented their plan and the board said, "Okay, we'll support you." But it was their program. And we supported them in that DPW would have to put the banners up and take them down. So, that was the extent of the village's support. What's happened to Trustee Conan's point is that it's become controversial, number one, because people are out there saying it was supposed to be for the, for the veterans and only the veterans, which is not true. And secondly, now people are blaming the board and the village, which is also not true. This was the Girl Scouts program. And at the point that they said they weren't going to do it anymore, someone else has to now present another plan, which someone is coming to meet with me on Wednesday, about a way that they think would be great to honor the veterans in a different way, but still honoring the veterans. Okay? Thank you for coming forward, though.
Can I, does anybody else have a question? I just wanted to say another question pertaining to this.
Okay.
About the flooding.
Yeah.
I went for a walk down Lower Lake. It's disgusting. Do you, do you guys get in touch with the county and work with them? I mean, it is, the bridge is out since Ida down, down at Lower Bronxville.
We have been talking to them about this.
There's islands in the, in the middle of the lake and debris. I mean, when I was a kid in this village, they used to dredge it. They used to dredge the Bronx River. Now, they don't do nothing for it. They just take the money, the taxpayers' money and puts it in their pocket or does something, you know? The roads are horrible. I mean...
The roads in Tocco?
No.
Oh.
In the county.
Okay.
I know it's a county, you know, park.
Yeah, yeah.
But you as a mayor can't, and it's in your jurisdiction, can you go to the county and say, "Maybe this is causing it to flood"?
So, we have spoken to the county and we are having another meeting with the county and with the Army Corps of Engineers to talk about, you know, this flood mitigation. So, I think that the, the remedies that they came up with the last time that they did an assessment are not adequate anymore. The problem is just too far gone. So, they're, they have to do something more. So, that's what we're exploring now. But to your point with regard to the bridge and all that, we will go back to them to just ask, where are we with this?
I mean, it's over a year.
Yeah. It is. It is. And you can also call the county and just say, as a, as a resident, you know, push for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board who has not yet? Yes?
Sal Provenzano, eleven River Street. I just wanted to bring up that one of the points I had mentioned last month was the, the walk signs that weren't working. And amazingly, the next day, they were working. So, thank you, thank you so much, you know, for getting that done as quickly because it was dangerous. There's another concern that I have regarding traffic safety and pedestrian safety. When you're traveling, I believe it's northbound on Lake Avenue and you get to Cedar Street where there's the right. You're forced to make the right to go down to Railroad Avenue. That is a very dangerous spot, especially for commuters and for kids that are playing soccer or whatever that are walking across that street. Sometimes the cars just make that, that turn. It's a blind right turn. There could be kids in the street. There could be cars that are double parked. I've seen a lot of almost near misses of people getting run over. So, I propose that there be a stop sign that is put at Lake Avenue and Cedar Street so that cars are forced to stop before they make the right. So, at least when they do go, they're not going to be, you know, making that right without, you know, in some cases, not braking at all. And they'll be forced to, if people are crossing the street, if kids are in the street, it'll be a lot safer, so.
Thank you. Definitely look at that. I saw the, the chief's brain working, Chief Costanzo, trying to picture that. Anyone else have anything to address the board? Okay. So, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved. We'll see you next month, Tocco.